And the courage to follow in the direction you would have us to go seek and serve God in Coleman County. May our efforts be benefit to our fellow citizens and to all of the people. We pray for peace and we pray for all who serves the public that they may discharge their duties capably and with honor and dignity. We pray for our friends and for our fellow citizens that we may enjoy an ever even-handed justice in all our dealings, that we may always know the blessings of freedom purchased for us at so great a cost, that we may with loyalty serve this county in true spirit of democracy. We bless Coleman County and Grant that we be blessed in all our neighboring counties. And finally, oh Lord, we pray for those affected by COVID-19 and the virulence. And Lord, we pray for the other diseases that send, of people that's in the hospitals, in the homes, when suffer from mental illness, physical illness, or disabilities. We ask you to comfort them with sense of your continued presence. Cheer them with the knowledge of your love and grant them the blessings of health and happiness this week. Pray out in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approve the minutes of July 19, 2022 meeting, August 22 special call meeting, appropriations, expenditures, personal actions payroll requisition for approved on genre entries to be posted.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve item five.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. Six. Any public comments or updates?
Thank you for allowing me a few minutes of your time. I want you to look around you. Three in five of us will be 45 and older and one in five of us, or one in four of us will be 65 and older in 2060. This shows the reality of us needing assistance in years to come. This is why I'm here. We need a duty to render aid law to make sure we get the help we need and people are held accountable. I've done a lot of research and found two states have a law similar to what we're requesting. Both states have horrific incidents that trigger the law. Eight other states have situation-specific laws while another six have current petitions for a law as well. We don't want to be next in line for a horrific situation that triggers that law. The law we'd like to propose is a person who knows that another person who is indisposed is exposed to or has suffered great harm shall, to the extent the person can do without danger or peril to self or others, give reasonable assistance to the exposed person unless that assistance or care is being provided by others. Reasonable assistance may include obtaining or attempting to obtain aid from law enforcement or medical personnel. Too often, people are ignoring the needs of others or recording and mocking when they should be helping. Drownings, overdoses, misuse of alcohol, rape, mentally ill, and any ailment that causes us to not think clearly are all examples of things this law will help. Things like this happen every single day. And the words that Theodore Roosevelt, "We should recognize the dangers that exist and that threaten us. We should neither overestimate them nor shrink from them, but steadily fronting them should set the work to overcome and beat them down." There is every reason why we should recognize them, but there is no reason why we should fear them or doubt our capacity to overcome them. If only each will, according to the measure of his ability, do his full duty and endeavor so to live as deserve the high praise of being called a good American citizen. For those worried about legal action when you choose to help, Section 65332G of the Alabama Code covers any good Samaritan who chooses to help from legal action. We must hold bad citizens accountable. Please help us by signing the petition for Harold's Law, which is the nickname for duty to render aid in Alabama. Our loved ones deserve justice. If you'd like to sign the petition, we have physical petitions here as well as on change.org under Duty to Render Aid Alabama. It's time we speak up and be the change. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Any other public comments or updates? We want to thank everybody for coming tonight. We've got a pretty good house, a little happy, so thank all y'all for coming. Any other public comments? We'll move on to find new business. A recognition Melanie Parsons, LIC SW Outreach Coordinator at Wellstein Incorporated for outstanding service to the citizens of Coleman County. It's truly an honor to have you here tonight. Thank you so much for coming.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. B, Proclamation Suicide Prevention Month. Whereas September is known in the United States as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month and is intended to help promote awareness surrounding each of the suicide prevention resources available to us in our community. The simple goal is to learn how to help those around us and how to talk about suicide without increasing the risk of harm. And whereas suicidal thoughts can affect anyone, it occurs among all age groups and across all socio-economic, racial, and ethnic backgrounds, and is the 12th leading cause of death in the United States and the 13th leading cause of death in the state of Alabama, according to the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention. And whereas the stigma associated with mental illness and suicidality works against suicide prevention by discouraging persons at risk for suicide for seeking life-saving help and further traumatizes survivors of suicide. And whereas the county of Coleman is no different than any other community in the country, but chooses to publicly state and place our full support behind local educators, mental health professionals, athletic coaches, police officers, parents, and many others as partners in supporting our community and simply being available to one another. And whereas local organizations like Cook Ministries are on the front lines of a battle that many still refuse to discuss in public, as suicide and mental illness remain too taboo a topic to speak on. And whereas every member of our community should understand that throughout life struggles, we all need the occasional reminder that we are all silently fighting our own battles. As in the words left behind by Johnny Cook, "Sometimes people are struggling with their life and carrying a smile, always trying to be strong. Be kind to the people you meet, you never know what is going on in their life. A kind word may be all it takes to help them through another day." Whereas public awareness of the warning signs and the networks available for at-risk individuals are essential to continue lowering the rates of suicide. And whereas while there is no single cause of suicide and no single suicide prevention program or effort that will be appropriate for all populations or communities, the initiatives to increase access to quality mental health, substance abuse, and suicide prevention services will help prevent suicide. Suicide is preventable and it is appropriate to bring awareness about suicide. Now therefore, as Coleman County Commissioner of Coleman, Alabama, we claim that the month of September 2022 to be Suicide Prevention Awareness Month.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve item B.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. C, Resolution 2022 Day 63 Adopt, be revised title of VI Program for Carts and authorize the chairman to sign all related paperwork.
Make a motion, we approve. Item C is, that's, uh, this is just a, just a fill-in for Coleman County Commission just fills in on this, this outline of this title.
Yes, sir. This is just the annual program to participate in the cards.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Chairman, I'll second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. D, Resolution 2022 Day 64 Authorize an agreement with Alabama Department of Transportation ALDA related to carts with partial funding by the Federal Transit Administration for fiscal year 2023, Day 2025, and authorize the chairman to sign all related paperwork.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve item D.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. E, Authorize the chairman to sign certificate of compliance with BIS and Hamilton Alabama Tax Payers and Citizens Protection Act for carts.
Make a motion to approve item E.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. L, Consider approval to order seven high-top transit vans for carts in the amount of $599,991 with a local match funds of $120,001 and authorize the chairman to sign all related paperwork.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve item B.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pass. G, Resolution 2022 Day 65 Change the speed limit to 25 miles per hour on County Route 34.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, our staff has inspected this room and found several conditions that were warranted of deemed 25 miles inappropriate. Speed limit for this roadway, and I do recommend the approval of this resolution.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve item G.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. H, Resolution 2022 Day 66 Apply for state and federal matching funds for the airport improvements, projects for the Coleman Regional Airport due to fiscal year 2023 and authorize the chairman to sign all related paperwork.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This is the next program in our AIP projects. Currently, we have this slated for the general aviation apron. We will note in the next few weeks if that will be the go project or if they'll go to the next one, but this would be applied for the grant of state and federal matching funds for that program.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve item H.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass.
Okay. Thank you gentlemen. I have another reading, if y'all didn't mean anything, please.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you.
Appreciate you all.
I, Resolution 2022 Day 67, The Modification of Per Deal and Meal Allowance for County Employees Traveling in the State of Alabama.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is just an update to our current per deal meal allowance. It's been 10 years, a little over 10 years since that per deal was changed. Currently, it's $20 for a half a day, $45 for a full day. We'd like to increase that to 25 for a half day and 55 for a full day, and this ties to the CPA for that period of time for the last 10 years.
Make a motion to approve item, aye.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. J, Consider the renewal of employee retirement health insurance for Blue Cross Blue Shield of Alabama. Coleman County maintains a self-insurance policy that is administered by Blue Cross. No change of standard levels for fiscal year 2023 and authorize the chairman to sign all related paperwork.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is the annual renewal with the Blue Cross Blue Shield administrative contract. We're self-insured and we pay them a fee to administer our claims, and this is just the annual renewal. There's, there's no change in any fees and we're going to maintain level funding for 2023.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve item J.
I'll second that motion, especially because there's not an increase. I think this is the first year in our meeting.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. K, Consider the renewal of stop-loss insurance with Unity RE Incorporated Gerber Life Insurance Company. No change in rates for fiscal year 2023. Authorize the chairman to sign all related paperwork.
Yes, this goes along with the, the type of plan we had. Because we're self-funded, then we need to protect ourselves for any catastrophic claims that might come up. So we maintain a stop-loss insurance that would kick in and pay claims if, you know, we had some catastrophic large claims. So our current stop-loss insurance is with the Unity RE, and we're going to request to renew with them. There's going to be no change in the rates for 2023.
Make a motion to approve item K.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. L, Consider the renewal of life short-term disability, long-term disability, and critical illness insurance on Mutual of Omaha. No change in rates for fiscal year 2023 and authorize the chairman to sign all related paperwork.
And this is the renewal for the benefits that the county pays for, for employees, for life, short-term disability, long-term disability, critical illness. There's no change in rates for 2023 on those as well.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve item L.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. M, Consider the additional of air med care to our benefits package effective, effectively 10-1 2022 for all active Coleman County employees eligible for employee benefits. Expected cost to be $55 per person annually, or $27,500 for 500 employees and authorize the chairman to sign all related paperwork.
And this, this would be a new benefit for our employees. The, the cost at 55 per person for the 500 employees would be a total annual cost of the 27.5 and any current, it would cover all employees that were eligible and their family members who reside in their residence with the air med care.
I make a motion to approve item M.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. I think this would be a great benefit to the employees. You thank you, sir, for your work on this.
It's everybody that lives in that residence, whether they're a family member or not. Is that correct?
I believe so.
Move in with your cousins and then you don't have to worry about.
And we do have, currently, Blue Cross Blue Shield maintains our ambulance service, but it's an 80-20 split. So considering when they do run those, our ambulances, that can be $40,000 every time they pick up somebody. So an 80-40 split, you know, our employees could be out $8,000. So this would cover, you know, them for a year for $55 and everybody in their household.
N, Consider changing our current vision provider from Canopy Southland to VSP to be administered by Blue Cross Blue Shield of Alabama effectively 1-1-23. This would be an enhanced, enhanced vision plan with better benefits and ease, easy to use. Increased cost to approximately $12,000 would be offset by the reduced administrative effort by having only one provider for the administration of the county health plan, including medical, dental, vision, and prescription drugs.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Currently, we have our vision through Southland. They switched from Superior and, and created their own network called Canopy, and there's been some issues with that changeover. It's not well-accepted yet. It's, they just put it in place, I think, the first to utilize. So what we'd like to do is switch over to VSP. That is the Blue Cross Blue Shield Partner Vision Care, and that would bring all of our health plans for everything up under the Blue Cross Blue Shield umbrella, and it would make it a lot easier to administer. The VSP network is the largest one in the country, and it's a lot easier to use, and it's accepted at far more places.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve item N.
Second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. O, Consider approval of facilities and equipment manager Shane Bailey to increase purchase allowance from $15,000 up to $20,000 for vehicles and our equipment that comply with state bid law and budget approval.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, this would just increase the amount of that excursion as long as it complies with bid law and as long as it's budgeted in, he would be able to purchase the equipment without having to bring it back to a commission meeting, up to $20,000. Due to the supply chain issues and availability of equipment and vehicles, this would make, make it much more feasible for him to do his job.
Make a motion to approve item O.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. P, Consider relevant Clarkson's covered cabin by straight-up included AC unit, excluded AC unit in the amount of $47,890 pending a deck of, a deck of approval to be paid for facilities.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, this will allow us to increase the value of some of our assets, also protect some of our assets that's been a lot damaged over the years. Hopefully, with these renovations, it will allow us to possibly rent out the cabin again and generate some revenue for our parks.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve item P.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. Q, Consider the purchase of two split air conditioning units for the Board Education Building not to exceed 7,000 each from Omni Partners Corporation.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, these units are on top of the Board Education Building. Some of them are close to 30 years old. This will allow us to purchase these at an amount of 30% to 40% savings and go ahead and replace them before they go out on us, and it's not an emergency situation.
Make a motion to approve item Q.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. R, Consider the installation of GPS in county vehicles from Source Wales. Contact in the amount of $1745 per vehicle, per month.
These will be run through the, excuse me, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, these will be run through the Verizon program, so they'll be working off any cell tower that's in the county. It will give us more accountability for our take-home vehicles. It also offers a maintenance program and some, hopefully, some fuel savings in the long run.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve item R.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. A, Consider approval of lease agreement for 24 months for Enterprise for seven 2022 Dodge Round 1500 Tradesman Ford 4 Crew Cap trucks for Animal Control and the Road Department, $43,696 each.
Mr. Chairman, this goes along with the fleet vehicle program we instituted last year. There's seven total. One of these is a replacement vehicle that we had damaged. This is only a, even with the price increase per vehicle, it's only a little over $100 a month increase out of our budget, so.
I make a motion to approve item A. Shane, on these, we can, we can sell these vehicles. We're not under contract to make, to keep them for a long period of time or...
We can sell them after a year, and we can retain that equity.
Okay, that's, yeah, that was my question. Yeah, so, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. T, Consider the insulation of porch pliers for stabilization porch. A, From Deep South Construction Pros for the Water Department in the amount of $9,600.
Mr. Chairman, this would be the south porch on our water department building. It's, all three porches have shown some decay and sinking in the ground. This, this porch is actually separated from the building, so this will allow us to get it back attached to the building and hopefully just monitor the other two and not have to have to expense it replacing them.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve item T.
I'll second that motion. Appreciate it.
Shane, we thank you for all you do. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. U, Consider approval of fiscal year 2023 County Transportation Plan per requirements to be rebuilt Alabama funds.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we're proposing to spend approximately $814,000, $814,000 of county rebuild Alabama funds and the federal aid exchange funds on each county route 1807 and County Route 813. And we will, we will be posting these, this County Transportation Plan in detail on our county website. How do you recommend approval of the County Transportation Plan?
You said federal aid exchange funds?
Yes, sir. It's the state funds that we're using instead of the federal aid.
Right. It's in lieu of, they place of, or whatever. Yeah, 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 okay.
And that was, you said 1807 and County Route 813.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Don.
Make a motion to approve item U.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. V, Consider recommendation by the sanitation department for new sanitation rates given you an annual increase by CPI effective October 1st, 2022.
Mr. Chairman, we have been working on this with the Solace Authority and with the Commission also, and what has happened is we had had an increase since 2012, and it's just, it's got to the fact where we're losing money every year to keep our vehicles replaced and do what we need to do to serve our, our county. We need to go up $3 a month for regular pickup. The senior rate would stay, would stay the same. That's 75 cent a week increase, $3 a month. Additional cans would still be $7. This is, this is based on CPI increase that we have been charged for the last 10 years for our landfill and services that we, we get there, and what we need to do is we just, we need to get over the CPI schedule, Consumer Price Index, which would give us an increase every year, and then we don't have to go 10 years and go up as much at one time. So that's, that's what I'm asking for.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve item P.
I'll, I'll second that motion, and you're, you're right, Rollo. We're operating in a deficit, and that's the, and that's the key to all of this. I mean, we're, we're operating in the hole right now, so we got to go up on rates to at least level out. I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. W, Consider the surplus of the following items from the probate office to be scrapped. A Canon Image Runner 4035 serial number listed. A Canon Image Runner C250 serial number listed.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve item A.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Pass.
Y, Consider the surplus of the following carts, buses to be transferred to other 5311 agencies. It'll be seven 2022. X., consider the surplus of the following items from the probate office to be scrapped. A Canon image runner 4035 serial number listed. A Canon image runner C250 serial number listed.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve item E.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? P. Y., consider the surplus of the following carts, buses to be transferred to other 5311 agencies. It'll be seven 2013 Starcraft Ford E450 vans, all the serial numbers listed.
Parents, there's your vehicle. Make a motion to approve item Y.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? P. Z., proposal plat JMBL Incorporated subdivision, a minor subdivision containing two lots located at wirehouse discount grocery property 5788, highway 157.
Please, Mr. Chairman, with the minor subdivision, we have the current subdivision regulations and I do recommend approval of this preliminary plat.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve item T.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? P. Double A, award bid number 1405 for rail track construction project for sportsman Lake Park to SDAC rail servicing amount of $58,142.72.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This allows, people that don't know, we've got two manual switches up there and someone's jumping off and on the train to, for the train to make the loop. This will be an automatic switch. And this company here, we can make a recommendation. We weren't in the bid and they are in state as well.
Make a motion to approve item Double A.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? P. B.V., bid number 1407 for pest control to American Pest Control in the amount of $16,224
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, this is just the annual pest control renewal and they were the sole bidder for this service.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve item B.V.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? P. C.C., bid number 1408 for the service for the sheriff's office and other county departments to the sole bidder Verco Incorporated DBA Havilane Express late.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, as it says, they were the sole bidders for this service and they were the ones who've been doing this for the past couple of years.
Make a motion to approve item Double C.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? P. D.D., request from attorney for executive session under section seven of Act Number
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve item B.V.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I've drafted a letter advising the executive session is necessary and proper to protect confidential information. The code section that's applicable is found in Alabama Code 36-25A-7A3. I am an attorney licensed to practice law in Alabama and the executive session will be to discuss pending or threatened litigation. I respectfully recommend and request that this motion, although it has already been passed, I will say that will only be out approximately 20 minutes and that we will reconvene after that time. And I will be the only other personnel, either chairman and the commissioners, in the executive session.
At this time, we have a request and a motion be considered for an executive session based on the recommendations of our county attorney regarding pending or threatened legal matters.
Make a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? P.